I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Welcome to our January 9th, Tiverton School District Committee meeting. We have a volunteer, I'll call them, for open forum. Mrs. Beck.
Hi, I'm just doing a reminder about Project Purple Week, which is coming up in two weeks. It's the 21st of January till the 28th. Once again, we're doing the Flamingo a Friend fundraiser. We had a very generous senior citizen knit scars for our little flamingos this year, so our flamingos will have scars, which is awesome. And the forms to Flamingo a Friend are up on the website. You all have a meeting on the Tuesday night of that week. The town council is doing a proclamation on Monday night and wearing purple to their meeting. And I encourage all of you and Diane Farnworth to wear the same outfit, to wear purple on your Tuesday night meeting, if you could, to support Project Purple for the week. It's Tuesday the 20th, you would be the 23rd. Jay Edwards has turned the bridge lights purple again, compliments of the DOT, or in conjunction with the DOT. And if you could support us, we'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to table item 5B1.
Motion to table, second.
All those in favor? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Rurick?
Yes, resignations, retirements, leave of absence, maternity leave, Tiverton High School. Amanda Verastro, resignation, teacher assistant for Barton, Nancy McDonald, custodian appointments, Tiverton High School. Daniel Atat, I hope I pronounced his name correctly.
Okay, and correspondence?
Yes, we received a letter from ASME, Rhode Island Council 94, a letter of intent regarding upcoming negotiations.
Okay, thank you. So, under old business, we have item 7A, the 2018-2019 budget. Before making any motions, I'd like to just sort of enter into discussion, especially as Mrs. Polish was not able to be here last week when we took up the budget initially. So, where is my paperwork? So, right now, when we left the discussion last time, we had asked Mr. Rurick to reformulate the budget with some of the requests from the building principals that had not been included. And I think I have, other than, at least mixing up my papers. So, there is a, oh, there it is, alright. So, on the second packet received yesterday, there's a line item. Is everybody looking at that? Oh, you're all technological. Alright, so we have a line item budget, and then we have a breakdown of the, this page, which is the breakdown of the
Go up there and change it, please.
Of the FY 18 budget, the FY 19 proposed budget, with those things added back in. And with a total increase of $883,764 for a 3% increase. The total budget was $30,777,022. And the production from state aid, Mr. Rurick, if I recall, is about 6.8 million?
That's right, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Which would actually lead to a net increase in the local levy of about 1%. Mr. Rurick, did you have any other comments you wanted to walk us through?
Yeah, I just want to get to the slide that Doc, this is the slide Dr. Larkin's referencing. What we included from our discussion on last Wednesday when we met was we added six full-time teacher assistants to it, each elementary school. We added, for the sake of discussion, guidance counselor position at the middle school, full-time position there. One-fifth additional remedial math at Picassett, as well as the coaching stipends and the associated costs with a boys' and girls' soccer team at the middle school. Our budget that I originally submitted last week was 1.9%, but when you add those additional items in, it's close to, just over an extra $300,000. And that's what this number represents, for the sake of discussion. I would like to add that when we built the budget and when I submitted it, it was under the understanding, or at least our past practice, of trying to level fund as many accounts as we can and try to really come in as low as we can, but yet still meet the needs of our students. So, we came in at 1.9%. If the committee, if I had known, or if I was aware, there are other items that I would have recommended to you if I knew we could go over that threshold to kind of change the focus of our budgeting practices. There are several items that I would have shown you for the purposes of discussion that would still get us to that 3%. There'd be things such as in-house remediation teachers at the middle school and high school that we need. I would like to have additional social workers hired so that we would have more coverage at our elementary schools. And I believe we could also provide coverage at the middle school to help with our student population that have social emotional issues. Mr. Ashley's also asked previously, from the previous year, for an academic support position. We also would have looked at putting money aside for bringing in professional speakers for our professional development days, for our teachers. All those things weren't added. I didn't put them in because I didn't think that was the direction we would go. So, what I did do was, for the sake of conversation and transparency, I did show, and we've done this for the last couple of years, what the principals asked for, significant items, but I didn't add. That's what that, that's what we had last week. So, for the sake of conversation, that's where, what that number represents. So, I'll leave it at that. Let the committee determine how you want to proceed.
So, the discussion, then, I guess, that we need to have is, sort of, Bill, my understanding is, I watched the meeting and from listening to you, the 1.9 was sort of our contractual obligations, if you will?
Yes, for the most, yes.
For the most part?
Yes.
With, I think, there was one small recommendation outside of capital.
That's correct.
So, then, the discussion, I guess, we need to have is if we're going to go above our contractual obligations, which take us to 1.9, then we see, need to start talking about priorities, how we set them, what we think should be added and asked for, and what we think we can wait on, what think, you know. So, it's really, do we want it? So, I guess, step one, do we want to go above 1.9%? Do we want to ask for more than 1.9%?
That's a good question.
Because if we say no, then none of the rest of that matters.
Right.
Right, and also, again, as part of that conversation, we have to assume that we're going to get a dollar more. And that, if we don't, that's great. If we win the battle at the ballot box, then it makes the conversation move. But we have to realize that whatever number we go in with, that's, that 573, the last year, last week's number that I showed you, that increase of $573,000 is essentially, as Mrs. Polish pointed out, our contractual and benefit increases. That's going to be hard to cover with a dollar more. Additional state aid may come in and help us to work it out. But if we go beyond that, and we'd have a hard time, if it gets, if we don't get that money, then we don't have the money internally to pay for it.
But is our responsibility really to come up with, placing that aside and understanding that's the reality, what we think we, you know, together as a committee, setting some priorities, what we think we should ask for? Understanding that may never come to fruition, and we, in fact, maybe, if we have to, we have contractual obligations of 553, we may, in fact, not only be getting the things we should put in, but we won't be getting the things that we want and need in because we'll have to cut below, you know, for the 553. So, it's really the approach we want to take. I mean, do you just put contractual? Or do you say, you know what, let's, let's put out there what we think we should, and if we don't win, you know, we don't win? I mean, are you thinking, I mean, I don't know. I mean, certainly, we don't, and, you know, we've always, all five of us, Sally, as long as we've been on, we don't want to ask the taxpayers. We're very cognizant of what we're asking for the taxpayers. And we know that, you know, there's budget constraints, but we also have a responsibility to the district. So, it's, it's certainly a discussion I think we need to have.
No, I think that's, that is precisely the question, and that is precisely the job of this committee, is to determine, in collaboration with the administration and the teachers, what are the priorities and what do we need to ask for? So, it does a bit take us back to square one if we kind of, sort of say, okay, well, if that was the wish list, well, the wish list could be much longer, or
Well, that, the, quote, "wish list" doesn't include anything that I'm, that I would recommend for your consideration.
Right, but we would, kind of like Jerry said, you kind of go back to square one.
We, I follow the direction of the committee.
Right.
So, again, we can do whatever, we can provide any scenarios that you'd like to see. It's up to the committee to determine what you want to see. How much you want, basically, is what's the threshold you want us to spend to? I mean, I can go over, I can go for the 4%.
Oh, goodness.
The things I just mentioned.
Yes.
The things I just mentioned bring us to 4%.
So, I guess, the question is not so much, you know, could we, lots of things.
No, but the things I just mentioned, the in-house remediation, the social workers, top, those would be my, those are top priorities. You know, a guidance counselor at the middle school is important, but I'd rather have, I'd rather get two or three social workers brought in contracted services so I can provide more services to more kids. Those are the conversations I'd have with you if I, if the parameters are changing.
If we want to have them, yeah, exactly.
Right, right.
Now, we're required to submit a preliminary budget by January 15.
That's correct.
And then we have until, was it March 15?
Yes, about there, yes.
To submit our quote-unquote "final budget."
That's correct.
So, in my view, that gives us a little bit of time to have more in-depth conversations.
Yes, that's a good point. I was going to mention that. We're not, we're, the committee's only obligated to submit a preliminary budget.
Right.
You can say, we're going to submit this number. Whatever number, whatever you want to submit is subject to change.
And it always is.
And as Sally and Mrs. Durfee used to say so eloquently, it's a movable feast.
Or famine.
Right, that it's, it's changes.
Turn your mic on. That's a good comment.
I should keep it up.
But it's really, it's to the committee. You provide us the direction, and we'll, we'll go in that direction.
Certainly, I know we had sort of put together a finance committee we didn't really ever meet, which would have been yourself, Diane, I, and Doug, which is now
Yeah, Lisa.
Lisa. And, I mean, we're happy to meet on a Saturday to sort of come up with some other things, Bill, that you think, you know, sort of hash out among ourselves, and then sort of bring back it to a list, and then we just kind of go one by one through them and vote and figure out what the priority of, is of the, of the group, see what that number is, see if it's, well, it's four, wow, that's really, we can't do that. Then you whittle it down more, you know, I mean, but I'm happy to meet, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm speaking for you. I've not taken up your Saturday mornings, but
Is there coffee involved? And I agree with Mrs. Polish, and one of the things that I would like to do is be able to prioritize, as the superintendent just mentioned, and attach, I mean, this is the exercise, right? Attach the dollars to those priorities.
Yeah, yeah.
And say, okay, this is where we are if we go this way. This is where we go. And be able to, on the fly, really adjust this number so that we understand fully what we're going to be asking the voters for.
Well, and that's, that's the, the argument, is, you know, this is not a number we're just pulling out of thin air to sort of increase the budget. It is for very specific purposes.
And I know I mentioned this to Mr. Rurick at the last meeting, that, you know, some of the requests that you were making, you know, I'd want more than just a line item, then I'm going to add staff, and here's my line item. I, you know, I would hope that, as a committee, we could talk about, really, okay, what are the priorities? What are the benefits of adding this staff versus adding that staff and getting the input that we need to make the right decisions?
That's why I think a list would be nice to sort of see, well, if you take that, you're giving up this. If you take this, you're giving up that. I mean, because that's the reality when you're having these budget discussions.
And again, that's, obviously, would need to happen if you have the change in your, in our approach. Because we've never, we have, quite frankly, we haven't done that. I've done it internally. I've made the decisions and presented budgets to the committee. For example, we're proposing to hire an additional half-time remedial reading teacher at Picassett. Last year, that was in the, didn't make the cut category, the, what we just added in that, in the last meeting. That was in that category last year. But the need is still there. So, now, we build it in, again, historically, what we've always done is incrementally add new staffing positions, you know, and again, unless it's something that we need immediately, and I would argue, supporting our students that have these social emotional issues. If we're going to go, if we're going to change our model, that's where I would talk to the subcommittee and talk about where we need to put some resources, additional resources.
And I think we've always sort of, that 2% was sort of always the
Now, the flip side is
Starting point, but it doesn't have to be.
We've, we've increased since FY 14, using the last, if you go with this number, for example, for conversation's sake, over the last five years, our increase will be 1.4%.
That's what I mean.
Where before, it was 1.2% with $574,000.
Right.
Historically, the school committee has done a superb job in submitting responsible, fiscally responsible budgets. But we know what the outcome is. 1.2 is not good enough. 0.9, a couple of years, we were at 0.6, right? And it was never good enough. So, I'm pleased that the committee is considering shifting the practice to say, here's what we really need. And I can make a case, just as the principals can, for what was on the list that we talked about at the last meeting. Everything that you'll see, you'll say we need. Then it will become a question of how much, you know, which ones do you pick, and then, you know, what the cost is associated with it. Justification is the easy part, because it's, they're all needed. It's not, believe, and it's just simply not a wish list of, you know, extra items, just to have them.
Mrs. Blatche?
Yes, I think anyone that looks at that chart, that we, our latest chart over here, can see what Mr. Rurick just said. I make it so the public can see it. Because when I go to meetings and people are talking about all these things, I have no idea. So, this is for everybody to see how responsible we've been. A year, not last year, the year before, we came to the town and said, we can make it without asking for anything from the town. You know, we can do it. So that, we want to work together, the schools and the town. It's not us and them, it's we, together. 02878, we're one town. And we've always felt that way very strongly. So, after that happened, that was for zero. The next year, we asked for what? It was very little.
Point something.
Point six.
They're right up there.
You know, but the thing is
Big faces were all out of state.
The thing is, we asked for that, and that was more than reasonable.
And, and
And the answer was no. The answer was, you're getting nothing. You're getting $1. And that's when I knew. That's when I knew, after 14 years, as Mr. Rurick said, it's never enough. No matter if the teachers go for two or three years with zeros and the administrators in their contracts and get one of the highest co-pays in the state, up to 20. When I first started, it was 1150. Then it went to 12, 15, 18, 20. And that's where the salary's not going up. So, you know what happens. And they did it. We said to the teachers, we're having these new schools, which is wonderful, a new library, amazing town. We have to pull together. And it was great. But then I said, after last year happened, no, because then things start to tip the other way. I'm in education, and I know that. And I know we need wraparound services for all the needs that these families have and these kids, social workers, and I came for the student assistance counselor to be increased. We used to have one at the high school and one in the middle school. Then she split time. So, I came to the meeting, and I said, we need her at full-time or someone else at the, and someone had said, no, we don't need that at all, let's cut it. And I said, I'm never putting that on again. So, these are the things. We need these things. These aren't nice-to-haves, or maybe we want it, we need all these things that we've mentioned, that Mr. Rurick has mentioned. We want to hear from the principals. We want to hear from the teachers and the staff. What do you need to do what we all expect you to do as a school committee and as a community? Because what we, it's amazing what's going on in education. The last five or 10 years, there are more changes than from when I started in 1967, with all the STEAM and the STEM and the computers and the new pathways that we have to work on, which we're very excited about, by the way. But there's so much work to be done. And so, we're going to have to, in my opinion, tell the community, explain to them why we need it and what we need, and then go for it. And then they'll decide. But I don't think, and I, in working with our finance committee, I think that'll be a great idea.
And again, this is something that the committee's well aware of, but for the folks in the audience and the folks at home, of course, the refrain will be, you have X dollars in your fund balance, so why are you asking for more money? What we're asking for are recurring expenses. To have a social worker, to have a guidance counselor, or whatever position that we're looking for, support, those will be in our budget year after year. They're not one-time expenses, for example, when we buy computers or whatever. Those are one-time, to do the parking lots. We're going to run into that. That's going to be a, you know, we've heard it. It's a refrain that we hear, and it resonates. The committee and those that support the schools have to be willing to almost go door-to-door, and Dr. Larkin and I have talked about it, and campaign for our budget, for whatever number it may end up to be. Because it's a siren song that, you know, the lowest tax number, the lowest number, people like to hear that. They don't want to know anything else, other than the lowest number. And it's incumbent on us, with even with the restrictions that we have with the charter, to explain to people, kind of like what we did with the high school and middle school bond, provide those rationales, and person-to-person, you know, wherever there's an event, we have to have people there, et cetera. But that is going to be, and I believe we're going to hear it on Thursday, that the cost of the bond is putting an undue financial strain on the town. So, I would be surprised if, come Thursday, we're not into a, we're right out of the gate saying that the costs of the schools are too much, and that refrain will begin.
And again, we can take that all into consideration at a later point. What we want now is to come up with some priorities for us to discuss and vote on what those priorities are. We get a number, and then if we need to adjust it down because of other discussions, then, then we will. But we need to have a starting point.
We have to do our job first.
Right, yeah, right. So, I think that's step one. And I don't know how quickly we can meet, but time of the essence that we can get back. And because, you know, we're going to have to have some discussions on those items as well, so.
As Mrs. Polish said, you know, it's going to be more than just contractual obligations.
Right.
If so, then what number, or what, because I have to submit something on the 15th on behalf of the committee. Do you want me, because I have to give them a total number and, you know, the support that I just, that you have in front of you now, is, I need to know what to submit.
Right.
You just have to submit a number at this point.
Well, I give them, historically
We don't have to give them the
We don't have to. I can just give a cover letter saying, we're asking for, and I'll use that number there.
That's what I would do right now.
$30,770,022.
And then when we're scheduled to meet
We're backup documents to follow.
Yes.
I can certainly do that.
Yes.
But I just need to know what number that, to submit to them.
Ms. Pavo?
No, I agree.
Alright. Before we actually move on to a motion and vote, I just wanted to briefly ask about some of the other backup we had. There was a breakdown of the stipends and the
Yes, that's
And this was very interesting. But I, I don't know, I must be getting needy in my chairmanship. But, so, one of the things I was curious about, it's a bit of a mixed bag in the way it's presented, and what I was hoping that maybe we could do doesn't, unless people want to talk about this further, but I'll sort of say what I was hoping to do was, if we could somehow break this down between the academic versus the extracurricular activities.
We have. Well, we've broken it down from athletics to all other stipend and positions. You have two, you have, you have one page of $110,074. That's for all the coaching stipends.
Yeah.
And then the second two pages are, it's everything else that's in the contract
Right.
For stipend and positions.
Right, 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 yes, correct.
But this doesn't include what, my issue with this is this doesn't include current volunteers
Right.
That don't get
We didn't have time to get that.
So, so, let me
Zero people.
Let me finish. So, so, right, so, what, it did have, on the first sheet, it had all the paid athletic stipends, and then all the paid stipends. And I guess I was, well, I guess that what, we didn't have the totals of, say, the, you know, the department heads. And then there were, like, a Picassett contact teacher.
Contact teachers are the same. Contact teachers are $1,000.
And they're on the second
No, no, I'm not saying that that, they're not the same. But I'm, I was thinking of those as more as a academic or
He just wants the list sorted differently.
We don't, I guess we can sort
Just take the Excel list and sort it differently into academics versus
But we don't view it that way.
That's how Jerry wants it. That's what he's saying.
That's what he wants to see.
That's what he wants.
So, what I'm interested in is stipends that are classroom-based, someone is teaching, a student, versus
I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Still, it's an educational activity, but it's a, an extracurricular activity. Hence the name.
Well, I think, Dr. Larkin, you have three categories here. Department heads, other student activities, which would be your extracurriculars, and other stipends, which are not always, I mean, the contact teachers are included in there. But you also have a webmaster, you have
Right.
Guidance department, you have school committee clerk. I mean, you have a number of
Right.
What you would consider, I wouldn't consider these all academic.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying, is that
They just didn't subtotal it.
They didn't subtotal, right, they didn't subtotal it, and
We didn't know to.
There, I, I understand that. This is not, not, this is not a criticism. This is just sort of, now that I see the information.
We can sort it anyway.
It would be helpful to have it sorted in a different, it would.
Again, I will sort it.
Granularity I would like to get at.
I will determine, I'll have to determine what I think is academic and what's not.
Right, okay. And you're probably the best person to determine that.
Because we don't.
No.
We don't do that by contract, but I will do my best.
I, I understand. Um, and then what Mrs. Paulus was getting at is also at some point, what are all the other positions that are not funded? So that we can, you know, this is sort of the tip of the iceberg or maybe it's half and half. Um, but we don't even know, you know, sort of what are the positions that are community volunteers, people coming in and giving of their time freely versus people getting paid. I'm not saying that.
Well, I don't know if it's volunteers so much as there's a, people that we appoint. I mean, there are people that are appointed by the school committee.
Yeah, we have people who do the ski club, people are hiking.
Language clubs, cyber patriots.
That aren't paid.
Coaches that we appoint that are not paid.
Enriching our students' lives.
Yeah, so not just a volunteer.
At no cost to us.
Not just a volunteer, but, but people that are appointed that we are currently not paying.
I'm using the term volunteer, meaning that we, that there is no money that is changing hands.
Unpaid positions.
Unpaid volunteers.
Appointed volunteers.
Appointed volunteers.
Appointed volunteers.
Unpaid.
Okay. So I think it, it would be helpful for us to look at that as we take up other issues.
Is the, is, and again, is it the purpose is to look at funding them?
No, it is the purpose to educate the committee and the community at large about exactly what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. So any other discussion?
So what number we send forward?
So I am going to, um, ask for a motion to, uh.
Mr. Cabral.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Cabral.
Before we move.
Yep.
If we're truly going to look at a needs-based budget, we're going to have to stop off our subpoenas. We are not successful with the present situation that we're in.
Well, I think all those requests are going to have to be funneled through the superintendent and then we'll, you know, get us a list.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is some of the requests that we gave originally without.
Sure.
We're going to have to have the opportunity to change some of those. If we're not looking at a zero-bait budget.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I would expect that, you know, it would be a collaboration between all the administrators and the, and the faculty.
Yeah. And then ultimately, you know, we'll have to, the finance committee and the superintendent will have to look at that stuff. Because it was, it was a very.
Just for the sake of discussion.
It was a very different.
It takes two months to get what you got last week.
Right.
Understood.
Essentially, it's with that, what you just mentioned, that's now reopening the entire process. That means I have to, then I have to go back with the principals. We have to have all our meetings. It's a very time concern. I mean, we'll do it, but it's much more than I'll give you with the finance subcommittee recommendations to look at with costs and a rationale. If, if, if the desire of the committee is to go back and redo the budget process, we will. But it's going to take us time to get, we're not going to have it for the twenty-third meeting. It's going to take us time to get the numbers. Uh, Elise is going to have to push the numbers through. It's, because every time, every time we change it, we have to change everything that we put into it.
No, I know.
And then I have to go.
That's okay. I think that's okay. I think it, if that's what you, you, we want a new figure.
But here's the thing. You, you, you have a maximum cap of four percent.
Right.
That's about one point, two million dollars roughly. So it can't, it just can't be a, a free-for-all wish list.
Well, no, Bill, it can't, I mean, it's going to be like it always is. The superintendent still has to vet the stuff and, 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 you know, put together. I mean, that's, that, that's what the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the business manager do is you, everything comes to you.
Right.
You vet it and you put together, well, here's my list of priorities.
Right.
And then we go from there. Well, we really didn't though, because we, like you, you said, you, you said to your administrators, flat. Now that, they might have asked, you know, Chris or whoever may have asked for something a little different if you said, you know what, we're going to approach it four percent. So now give it to me. And that doesn't mean they're going to get it because you may say it's not a priority of yours. But I think it's a little bit different approach and I'm, I'm, I do apologize. I think it's going to have to happen quick, but, um.
It just won't.
It still has to be funneled through you.
It just won't happen quickly.
Wow.
We'll do it as quickly as possible, but it's not going to be within two weeks to, to get it all.
No, I know.
No, no, but we do have until March fifteenth. We do have something like.
But I'm just trying to say.
But taking an honest look at what the priorities really are.
When, and, and I get that, but I asked back in December, what are the priorities? I asked the committee. And I didn't, nobody said anything.
No, you're right, we didn't.
No one said we were changing the, the parameters for building the budget. It's just, it's just hard to, to manage with a, with a moving target as to what we have to provide the committee. And we'll provide it.
Thank you. So perhaps set a deadline for your administrators.
I will.
I need it by this day.
I know, I will.
And then you'll go, you and your team go through it by this day and then you tell Diana and I, we need you this day, this.
I know, I'm going to create a second budget schedule like we've done before.
We have made, remember, made meaning.
Yes. Yes.
Still need a number to.
Right, so I'm, I'm getting that. Yeah, so I, I guess what we're saying, Bill, is that we are willing to go up to three percent.
Okay.
If we move this number, which I expect we're going to in a couple of minutes.
That's good, because that gives us.
Then let's hear what the priorities are. I, okay.
I wouldn't say that we are constraining ourselves to a certain percentage this evening. We're submitting a preliminary number, period.
Correct. Right. Okay.
I mean, at the end of the day, we may come down to two and a half. I don't know.
Well, and that's what I was saying. We may get to that meeting on Thursday and we may have a discussion with the council and the budget committee and come back and be back at the one point nine. But it's our job to not start there. I, I just.
Correct. Okay, so I am going to ask for a motion to move separately the funding for the school resource officer in an amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Can I have that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And I would like to ask, um, to, for a motion to approve a total budget of thirty million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, twenty do, twenty-two dollars less, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
What was, I'm sorry, what was the fifty-seven, it was fifty-seven thousand?
Fifty-nine, eight seventy-five.
That's your total budget right there, thirty-seven.
Yes, that, that is the total number.
I got that number.
But we have two separate motions. One was fifty, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five. The second was for thirty million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, twenty-two minus fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five. Okay. Item seven B, superintendent search. So you all received in your packet, three bids for a consultant to help us with our superintendent search. Uh, Mr. Robinson reviewed all of the, uh, bid proposals as well and did some, uh, discussion with each of the, um, bidders. The, uh, and I had a conversation with Mr. Arardi, who was the, uh, low bidder. Um, the three bids were for, um, New England School Development Council, McPherson and Jacobson LLC and. Where's his business name? JE Consulting, Dr. Joseph Arardi Jr. So, uh, he is out of Connecticut. Uh, Nezdek, the New England School Development Council is out of Marlboro, Massachusetts. And then McPherson and Jacobson was out of Omaha. Um, Mr. Arardi's proposal was seventy-five hundred dollars plus, uh, travel and then other, um, expenses as approved separately by the committee. Nezdek's proposal was about fifteen thousand dollars, I want to say. Should have had these numbers more at my fingertips. And McPherson and, and, uh, Jacobson was fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Mr. Robinson and I were both in agreement that Mr. Arardi's proposal was both the best bid financially as well as actually, I think, what he's able to offer us in terms of being local. He's a very small operator right now. Um, and I think we'll be able to get very good, uh, customized service from him. He's very interested in, he, I think, brought his proposal down a bit because he's very interested in being able to move into Rhode Island and parts of Massachusetts. Uh, so my recommendation is that we, um, take that as our, uh, take him as our consultant. Um, I could ask for a motion and then we could have some discussion.
I want that motion for discussion, so it's just a second hit.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Um, one question that stands out, there was absolutely no one from Rhode Island available.
It was advertised and these are the bids we got. We got three bids.
These were just the bids we got. Okay, okay.
So I didn't go through the phone book.
No, okay. With that said, I, I would agree with you. I, I really wouldn't want to go to Nebraska.
Yeah, that seemed to be a net, well, it was funny because they, you know, I was looking through their proposal and they had, it seems like it's a, I don't know, like it's a gigantic network of consultants, I think, that are kind of in a.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Administrative structure out of Nebraska, which, nothing particularly wrong with that. But I did know, you know, and then I'm looking, well, okay, who's from Rhode Island? Nobody. Who's from Connecticut? Nobody. Who's from Massachusetts? Nobody. So I think the closest was Pennsylvania. And I just don't think we'll have the same kind of interactions with someone from that, uh, plus they were the high bidder, um, from that group. Uh, Nezdek, I thought, had a very good proposal, um, and they have a lot of experience.
True.
Um, but I still think that we're going to get the best customized service from someone who's, uh, frankly, a little hungry, wants to build his business and has some very impressive credentials, including, uh, working a lot in Connecticut and actually was the superintendent in Newtown.
Right.
Not during the Sandy Hook, uh, events, but I think immediately thereafter.
Right.
So. Any other discussion?
I, I agree with, you know, I was looking for someone more local that would understand our rules and regulations and, you know.
Yeah, and I think he's worked in a lot of districts our size, so.
Yeah, yeah. That's important. That's very important.
Yep.
We're not a huge district.
So any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, what I will do is, uh, contact him or ask Steve to contact him and set up a preliminary meeting for him to meet with, uh, the committee to sort of begin discussion of the process.
And thank you, Dr. Larkin, for speaking on that.
You're welcome.
So if he can come, our January meeting, that would be great because that's what I think we need to discuss process.
Yep.
Timing.
Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, I did have a pretty long conversation, um, with him and he's got a very, you know, clear idea of how we should proceed, so. And we'll be happy with him.
Anxious to hear from him. Okay.
All right. Uh, item seven C, update on the town, town charter review commission. Mrs. Black?
Um, yes, I've been going to, um, to all the meetings and I did present the, uh, school committee with a packet that we could hardly lift. Um, I try to take good notes when I'm there, but when they keep changing the votes and everything, but I, I do my best to give you what's going on there.
It was, it was very helpful.
And, um, I have another one being made. It's not as big, but I have another one from last night and Dr. Larkin was also there so he can discuss. Ours went through quite well, I thought.
Yeah.
What we were asking for.
Although I think one, yes, I, you know, a lot of our things were sort of housekeeping things about election of officers and, um, discussion about how you fulfill vacancies on elected boards and elected officials. One thing that would affect us that wasn't necessarily something we were involved in directly in terms of the proposal was they voted to have the charter require all, uh, collective bargaining negotiations occur in public, which.
They did vote for that?
They voted in favor of that.
Okay.
Luckily, they did take the one off of that, that they had to be approved by the FTR. They withdrew that part of it.
That was really crazy.
But they did still keep the one on for the, um, and the other one is the recall.
Okay.
That we have to keep our eye on is the recall.
There was, there's a lot of discussion about the recall process. And, uh, my concern was that they're going to create a mechanism whereby you can, you'll, you'll be able to recall an elected official with a very motivated minority that's going to overturn the results of an election essentially, um, without necessarily any criteria for how, you know, recall, anyway, it's.
So a minority controlling, you mean like the FTR?
Sort of, um.
The number they had was a hundred. You would only need a hundred signatures to kick off the recall.
Wow.
And that's very low. So we, we all talked about that, making that, it should be a difficult, a hard process because it's very serious. If you're going to recall someone, it has to be for something, I think, very seriously.
Well, and thousands, thousands of people vote. I mean, thousands and thousands and thousands of people vote. And to have a hundred people turn over that vote.
Right now, it's twenty-five percent of the votes that you got.
That's triggering an election, but the problem is that you sort of have this one.
Then it was sixty percent had to vote in the affirmative or, I started.
It does, it does have to be a super majority, but the, the problem is you get this one-two punch where you have a very low threshold for triggering an election. But then, you know, the election's on, you know, August fifth and.
So who's going to be motivated to go? It's like a special election.
So then you have, then you have it, the, the person who's being recalled. You know, it's incumbent on them to then campaign. It's, it's, uh.
It's, it's going to.
It's problematic to say the least.
If, if we intend and don't discourage people from running enough.
Right.
It's probably going to discourage people even more.
That, that was one of the points I was trying to make to them was that it would have a withering effect on sort of public participation and, and sort of governance in general.
That's probably what they'd like to do.
So guys, they, I might, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, Elaine, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I just said, they may want to discourage people in a sense because you'll just have a particular group of people that'll be interested in running.
True. So I see ninety-five and counting.
There's over a hundred now.
Oh, there is? So did they give us any indication when they're going to whittle that down so we can start?
They're merging some of them.
They are. So that we can, because some of these, I think, are going to be legally challenged.
Yeah.
And that's the other thing, I'll say, oh, that's not legal. And then they say, well, if the people vote for it and then the general assembly accepts it, it trumps.
Well, no, that's not.
So we'll, we'll look into that, but I mean, um.
So we can, if our, if our community says we want slavery back.
Well, then.
And the general assembly approves it, well, then we just have slavery intent. That's, that's ridiculous.
So, but we're, we're. Keep our eye on it and I'll keep reporting to you. And they, they are going to bundle them and whittle them down. Of course, they have to, you know. And some of them, as you see, are around the same subject, so they put those together now, you know. And then once we have the fight, the, the one that really counts, we'll give it to Mr. Robinson so he can look through it for us and let us know.
So the timeline of this whole process, right? The, I mean, ultimately, it'll be the November of twenty-eighteen vote on the charter. So at some point before that, does not the town council need to ratify?
Yes.
And if the town council does not want to put forward one or more of their recommendations, are they obligated to?
No, I don't think so.
Especially if they're illegal? Okay. So there are a number of steps that still have to be taken.
Right, of course.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure. So actually, a question did come up and no one seemed to have the answer. And it had to do with the stipends that the members of this committee and the town council get. I actually had always saw it was in the charter, and no one seems to know where they, where it came from, and I was wondering, Bill, do you know where they came from?
The amounts?
Well, that even, there is a stipend offered, and what the amounts are, or?
I just know that it's been done for at least the past, Elaine's been, a long time, right, twenty-five, thirty years?
Like twenty-five, thirty years.
Yeah.
Probably at some point, someone, probably the council determined, or started a practice that it
Nationally, it's not, it's very common.
It is very common.
Yes, it's not uncommon for folks that get elected.
The number hasn't changed.
But again, the number, believe the amount that you folks have paid.
Well, certainly, just for the audience's edification, so all the members of the committee get a hundred dollars a month to be on this committee, and two hundred dollars a month to be on the town council. I give mine to my son's Cub Scout pack, I don't know what anybody else does with theirs.
Yeah, I mean, the theory is, you know, it takes a lot of time and effort.
It's a small recognition for everyone.
It's not unheard of.
But no, it's not uncommon.
And some get much, much more.
Yeah, I'm not sure, again, it's one of those where you have to go, well, I don't really know, that means it's, A, it was a long time ago.
Yeah, because it's, you're concerned, if you think about it, our legislative, our part-time legislators at the State House get paid too.
Well, just for the longest time, they paid three hundred bucks.
Yeah.
In mileage, I think, and then they changed it about twenty years ago, I think.
Yeah, it's recognition of it, that it is a public service, and that you are, you know.
So, anyway, well, one of the proposals also was that they eliminate, get rid of I think that's okay, nobody's really doing it for the money, but
They'll pay for it.
It was entertaining, all right. No votes on that. All right, so, new business, proposed changes to the THS program of studies, number eight A.
Yes, I'm gonna ask Mr. Ashley to highlight them for you, but we've submitted four changes to the upcoming program of studies. AP Computer Science, Intermediate Algebra, Creative Writing, and Astronomy. Chris, you wanna speak to those, that off?
Sure, thank you. Yes, we're very excited to present these four new course proposals before you. This started from the teachers, where I initiated a conversation with the leadership team, you know, essentially back in the early fall, and it's always rich discussion, actually, because, I would tell you, there's a lot more ideas that are talked about than actually presented on this paper, and so it's always kind of a tough conversation to have, but we'd be excited for all of the courses. I just highlight, I guess, the AP Computer Science in particular, because it, the computer science curriculum in general is relatively new to us, the high school, and so we had a new course last year, and so we'd be excited to go to the AP, to offer the AP level for next year as well.
Okay. Any, do we need to vote on that, is this informational?
You should vote to accept it.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Do we know who, which teachers will be assigned to these classes?
We know Mrs. Moore will be assigned the AP Computer Studies.
Okay.
But, Chris, can I, I don't think the others have an asset.
We don't know for sure which teacher, because it would depend on
And what, how about the levels, are they all a prep level? Well, I saw some, did I see something that was honors, no, are they all prep level courses?
Certainly not the AP one.
Yeah, that's the one I saw at the top.
Yeah, the Roman numeral one would be the honors.
So Creative Writing would also be honors?
Correct.
The others would be
Glad to see that one.
So, I have a question.
Just actually, point of order, can I have a motion in a second before we go?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Question regarding the Intermediate Algebra.
Sure.
Little bit more color about what the thinking is on that.
Yes, this course is coming out of really a very long time conversation with the math department around a gap in our overall math curriculum, in that if you are a math student that knows he or she wants to go to a calculus by their senior year, we have a pretty set track for that. But that, for the student that is not sure or knows, well, I might not be quite ready for that calculus by the time I get to my senior year, particularly in their junior year, but also in our senior to a degree, we were always kind of trying to find a balancing act in terms of a best fit course for that student. And so, it wasn't necessarily all students that would meet this, but that really, for some time, every time we'd come around to scheduling season, there was always a conversation, all right, well, with the student and the parent and the counselors, what do we think is gonna be best for the student? And it was always like, I guess we'll try, you know, our math foundations or our pre-calc, but we know it's either potentially a little bit too much, you know, it's gonna be a bit of a stretch, or well, it's not quite the rigorous level that we would hope for that student, so this fits that.
And are these classes, are they additions to the course of studies, program of studies, or are they replacing something?
Additions, so not replacements, additions.
All four?
Correct.
And are we hiring to fill these roles?
No.
No.
What it is, is the program of studies gives our students choices to take courses to meet their graduation requirements, and also to pursue areas of interest. Especially with the, even AP Computer Science, these arguably, except for maybe the math, because you need four years of math, the other three are really electives.
Electives.
Students can choose to take them or not take them. So what that means is, we have a finite number of students, so students will gravitate to what interests them, and then we just run those courses where we have enough students in them to run. So, we're not hiring any new staff, we're just going to be providing more offerings to our students.
Could it mean that if students gravitate to one of these versus something else, you may not run?
That's correct, we just wouldn't run another, whatever that elective may be, because they're now not taking elective A, they're taking elective B. It just gives them another choice.
And do we, do we look at that, do we, do we drop courses? If we see that, you know what, it's been three, four years, no one's really, yeah.
We do, we do, it takes several years, it's not sudden, but
Every class is different and you need
Right, right. You know, the nature of the overall curriculum, and as a comprehensive school, you want to, you know, essentially assess are our course offerings meeting the kind of subtle changes in needs of the students overall.
And I would assume you want to be very careful before you get rid of anything, because as we all know, once it's gone, it usually does not come back.
Right, and again, it's important with the Intermediate Algebra to target those students who aren't, you know, they're gonna major in math in college, or a field where math is required.
All I can say on that one is, it's about time.
That's right, that's how I feel.
We need that.
And I'll leave it at that.
And the flip side is, also, we're challenging the high flyers in math and sciences with the AP Computer Science.
Good, I like that.
So, we're trying to, you know, balance off the needs
And that's what we need, is the balance for all the kids.
Okay, can I have all those in favor? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ashley.
Thank you.
Item HB, request to start a track team at the high school?
Yes, Ms. Wardell, is that? Mrs. Wardell is gonna make a presentation to the committee, and I believe Mr. Botkin is in the audience, hiding back there, I think, regarding starting a track team at the high school.
Hello? So before I begin, I am up here presenting not as
I think you're not
You gotta hit the, there you go.
So before I begin, I am not up here presenting as a school principal, I'm up here presenting as a parent of a student that attends Tiverton High School. And I also would like to draw your attention to all the pictures of the students that we have in the presentation tonight, because they are pictures of our students that are on the cross-country team. So we would like to start a spring track and field team here at Tiverton High School. I hope I do this correctly.
There you go.
Tiverton High School Fall Cross Country Team began four years ago, and forty out of forty-two Rhode Island Interscholastic League teams run two seasons. They run Fall Cross Country and Spring Outdoor Track and Field. So the students can practice really year-round. Only Tiverton and Davies Vocational Technical School do not. So, it really puts Tiverton students at a disadvantage. And when you look at Davies Vocational Technical School, because it's a vocational technical school, when those students go home, they actually can compete at their home school if Davies is not, or the Vocational Technical School does not have a sport that they would like to participate in. So it's really only the Tiverton students in Rhode Island that cannot participate in track and fields in the spring. The College Connection. We have four NCAA Division One schools with running programs, Brown, Providence, Bryan, and URI. And even at Providence College, several elite runners actually go right into the U.S. Olympic program. All run three seasons, they run the Fall Cross Country, Winter Indoor Track and Fields, and Spring Outdoor Track and Fields. College coaches scout and recruit runners based on Rhode Island Interscholastic League, cross-country and track and fields meet times, because that's standard. Because Tiverton runners only have the fall times, automatically, all Tiverton runners go at the bottom. So our Tiverton runners really don't have an equal playing field when it comes to being recruited by some of these top schools we have right here in our own state. Our beautiful field, right here, is just wonderful, and Brad Botkin, our coach, had Keith Lawton, who is director, the state director of cross-country, come over and look at our field, and he said, everything is really just terrific for training and for competing. And our equipment, we really have all of the equipment necessary that we need to begin our program. We, so, just to recap, we have all of our equipment that we need, we have the field that we need, we have our uniforms from our fall program. We have players all interested, and we actually have lots of parents here. And we also have eighty-six people who signed petition here. So we have lots of program support. And here's the money page. What we need financially in order to start for this coming season, which consists of an invitational meet, four regular season meets, one divisional meet, and if we qualify, which we really, really hope, is a state meet, is busing cost approximately one thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars, and I verify that amount with, for a student. Rhode Island Interscholastic League, which is about seven hundred fifty dollars, which I verified with Mr. Lawton. And coaching donation, so our total cost should be two thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. So we're asking the school committee tonight permission for the approval of our spring track and field program, and permission to fundraise, so our boys and girls can compete beginning this spring.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion for approval for purposes of discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve that request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Silence?
Yes.
So I just have one comment, and I know Deb and I had this discussion around the middle school soccer. So, the transportation is always the highest cost for these activities. And there is statute that governs this, and it has to do with, and I guess there is issues of insurance and stuff, but when we looked at it, it wasn't absolutely clear to me that you had to provide transportation in a bus. So, what do I mean by that? It seems that it would have allowed transportation by parents, or sort of the sort of the understanding is that by participation, you would be it was understood that you would have to provide the transportation, and then people can do that as they see fit, carpool, you know, call around, whatever. So, I'm just putting that out there, if your fundraising fell short, you might want to consider that.
But I would think we'd need a school policy on that, because I, I have issues with that, from both a fairness and just liability standpoint, I would think that as a committee, we need to establish a policy that we're okay with that, before we say
Could well be.
Because one of the things you'd have to consider as part of a policy is while you allow a child to ride with another parent, I give permission for my son to go with another parent, or to be transported, don't even say who the parent is. How do we know it would be coming on us, as the school department? We would have to verify insurances, you know, there's a whole litany of things, and that's even
No, what I'm saying is that
The trust okay's it.
The statute does not require the district to provide transportation.
But you have other issues, you may have a statute regarding transportation, but you have legal liabilities.
Right, and I don't know where that falls either, I'm just putting it out there.
Now, you'd also don't, in Rhode Island, a couple of years ago, you don't need to travel on buses. I mean, this is for further discussion. Perhaps you seen a van for teams that have small numbers.
Well, they did change that, so that we're able to do that, which is good.
We are able to do that.
Those smaller vans.
We do appreciate that.
I think for purposes of this, we have to assume there's going to be busing costs, because we're not at a point to say there's not going to have.
Right, we do appreciate that, thank you very much for, you know, thinking about that and for considering it. When we were figuring out the budget, what we did is, we asked the race director, you know, where would we be racing?
Right.
Because it's so late in the season, we would not be hosting any of the meets here in Tiverton, we would be going out, but all of our meets would be scheduled in the East Bay. So the furthest meet that we would be going to is in Barrington. So, we estimated out with, for a student, what the cost would be for any of the busing to Barrington, and we also figured out, you know, just the overall busing cost. So we have like, a higher probably busing cost than it may be, we do like the so, but, but I do appreciate it, and, you know, for, to have a bus, there may be some student that may want to participate on a team, but for whatever reason, maybe both parents work, maybe they wouldn't have access to have a ride. If they know that there is a bus available that they could get to the game, they would maybe be able to participate. So it's just, it's kind of an equity issue, so
No, I agree. I'm just saying it's a little gray, I think.
Yeah, and we appreciate that, because we really would like this program to get started for the kids.
Right.
Mrs. Wardell, how many, approximately how many kids were in the program, the fall program, this year?
I think there were, Brad, were there fourteen? Mm-hmm.
Seventeen. Okay, and the middle school running program, the program they have, they had sixty-five kids in that program this year, that I thought was way too high. But, some of those kids are gonna transition to the school, because track,
Right, absolutely.
Running, track and field is something everybody can do. They can run, they don't have to be a great pitcher or a great hitter, but they can run, they can work on it and get better and better. So that number will probably grow.
Right, and it's an individual sport, and some kids, you know, they, we encourage, you know, children when they're very young to get involved in a lot of team sports, but some kids, as they get older, they find out that they're more successful in participating in individual sports, and running is a sport where when you find that it's something that you really love, you can continue doing it all of your life. So
No, that's, I think it's very exciting, you know, I'm all, with the health and wellness and all the other things, and what I love about it is what you said, you don't have to be, you know, really tall, or really huge, or really anything, you know, you can put on your sneakers and go, and that's, that's very exciting for so many kids. And so I hope this all works out.
Thank you.
Are there any issues with space availability, or?
This, can I just add? Is, currently as proposed, it'd be a running program, so space really isn't an issue, because they'd be running events.
Oh, it's running.
We could, again, so in the first year, the space isn't an issue.
Right.
Because we would have the space, the question would be coming in years out. We do have the space, but it means, you know, taking down the softball, I think they have a fence up there for the softball field, that would have to come down. They'd run the field, it would be a scheduling issue, so it'd be another event in the spring. But I talked to Mr. Murray, yes, that's doable, you know, if it gets to that point. But Mr. Murray couldn't make it tonight, because there's a game tonight. But his concern isn't with the proposal, with track and field itself. His concern is that His concern is that over time, these programs, kind of, we've talked about this before, they kind of morph and we end up owning them. Bob's concern as the A.D. is twofold. One, and I believe I mentioned this before, there are some sports where there's only one head coach, but we have enough kids where we really should have an assistant coach. So his concern is that if we're going to add another sport, you know, shouldn't we be supporting what we have now before we consider that? Secondly, and Sally brought it up at the last meeting, fundraising, we haven't increased Bob's budget in, I think, thirty years. And I'm not, it's not hyperbole either. He does a superb job of fundraising, et cetera. So this would just, again, no question that it's a valued activity for our kids. It's just the long-term, you know, again, sometimes when these issues come up, they're great, but then there's a long-term, you know, obligation that the district has to own, and we're already pressed for space. But we could work it if the track team did expand, but that's just something for the-
For the future.
And again, right now, the twenty-eight-hundred number is, is a very low number and probably reasonable to fundraise for. But when you go to, if you try to expand that out and costed it out, you're probably looking at four or five times that because you're looking at multiple meets. You're not going to host every meet here. So that cost will go up significantly, well, from what the number is now, significantly over time. But it's just something that you need to consider when you're-
When you say Mr. Murray does a lot of fundraising, is that sort of sports-specific or he sort of-
Sports-specific.
So he does-
To run the programs.
Different programs have their own-
Yes. He oversees them all so that they have the uniforms and-
For all those candy bars.
And equipment that they need.
Along with the boosters, they do a tremendous amount of fundraising.
They do a tremendous amount. They're, they're really good job.
I think one question that I would have, we have a quite a wide variety of spring sports already here at the high school. And I, I'm not going to start listing them all because I'm sure I'll miss something. But I, I know we have a couple of sports already for individual-type students, be it tennis, golf, and perhaps something else, I'm not familiar. With a school our size, I, I guess my question is really, how many sports can we adequately run?
That's, that's, to answer that, that's similar to the course, what we just talked about. If, then every time you offer, I mean, this is unique because it's, and I don't want to take away from those that run because it takes a lot of effort to run competitively, but it's not a skill sport. So the kids, in the sense of, you're not hitting a baseball, you're not shooting a basketball or whatever. So the kids that would gravitate towards that, my experience would be, they're, they might not be in some, a sport right now, or they might be in an off-season. They may play football.
Right.
For example, or a, a fall sport, soccer. And they just want to stay in shape, so they'll run in the spring. So, you know, you, you'd see duplication as well.
Do we see lacrosse being impacted by that?
Well, there's a couple of things. First, as far as the other individual sports, both of the individual sports that you, that you named, according to the Rhode Island Interscholastic League, are boy's sports. So the track and fields program that we're proposing-
The co-
Will be for boys.
Do you have girls playing tennis?
No. It's boys tennis and girls are playing boys tennis.
Okay.
So, because the girls tennis team plays in the fall.
Okay.
So it's the boys tennis team and the girls play because they're playing a different sport. So this would be a spring track and field team where students would run a girls team and a boys team. So this would give girls an individual time and a real opportunity. And I think that would be fair for girls. And then like Superintendent Rick said, it would give opportunities for cross-training. And there's a rule as of last year that the Rhode Island Interscholastic League passed that students are able to play double sports in a season. So if a student is playing lacrosse, a student can also play another sport during that same season. So if a student's playing lacrosse, a student can also do track and field, or they can also do tennis, or they can do something else.
Assuming that the-
As, as long as the schedules are-
When they're either coaches and the-
Correct, correct.
If-
I, I guess my-
I'm sorry, if the committee is going to, if you're pondering, you know, considering approving it, I just remind you that for soccer, you asked Mrs. Lopes-
That was one of my next-
Okay, to predict, to have the money on hand, you know, to have the money upfront before we run the program. That's the only-
Yeah, the, the motion is just to, right, right now, it's just a discussion. Right. Yes. Well, my understanding is the motion is just to approve them fundraising to establish the program. That was the request.
No, I think it's-
Prove the program and to prove, to raise fundraisers.
Fundraise also.
But it would be-
So we are not committing funds?
No.
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 And the, specifically the coaching donation is not considered a stipend?
No.
It's a donation.
Because a coaching stipend would be in the couple of thousand plus.
Okay.
If it was, but we don't even have the stipend in the contract.
So that's why I'm a-
But if you use a stipend for similar-sized sports, it'd be much more than $500.
Yeah, it would. I, I just have a, thank you, Suzette, that was a great presentation. And I guess my concerns more are not that this isn't a great addition, but sort of long-term, as Bob was speaking, that we need to have more of a, I think, consolidated, thoughtful approach to what we're adding and when. And, and I'm not saying, "Don't approve this" because I, it sounds great, it sounds like it's going to give kids an opportunity. But I might want to suggest that we have both our A.D.s from our middle school and our high school form some sort of committee, and that we can make sure that what we're adding is both the middle school supporting the high school and thoughtful as far as individual sports for team sports. And sort of look at how many sports can a school with only 516 kids really support? How many are being offered in other communities of our similar size? Because, you know, you have a very, you know, we have a limited, if you're fundraising in Tiverton, there's only so many Tiverton people you can go to. If you're, you know, you have 516 kids, I think in this instance, you're right, it's very different. But we, we seem to be offering, we've got, how many now at the middle school? Four?
We have three. We have girls and boys basketball and cross-
Cross-country and soccer.
Well, we ran soccer.
We ran soccer.
We ran a boys, girls.
Well, yes, so regardless of how it's funded, this is what we're offering. I guess, I'm not, I think this is great. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm going to vote to approve it. But what I would like to see is have our A.D.s work together, perhaps put up a committee, and let's, let's sort of look at our approach and, and come back at some point, it can be in months. I mean, you know, but I'd like to have a little bit more of, from them, they're the experts. How many sports can we support? What kind of impact does it have on the fundraising, as Bob has already spoke to? He's concerned about, you know, how do we support the ones that we already have and we keep adding more? So I would, I would guess I would like to have some thought from our A.D.s, from their perspective of where they think as a district we are and where we're going and what they, what they need. Does that sound?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Okay. Thanks. There seem to be some other people who might want to speak.
Hi, good evening. Brad Botvin, I'm the cross-country coach. I just want to let you, one of the questions I have is you're going to, if you approve us to fundraise, what does that entail? Does that mean that we, we get a pocket full of money and we get it from these people and we say to you, "Hey, we have X amount of dollars." Are we going to get approved or don't we get approved? I don't want to take people's money.
Approval is contingent upon the fundraising.
So, so the, the motion is to approve and to allow fundraising, but we are not committing any funds.
Correct. So Brad, you'd raise the mon, I'm sorry, Jerry, you'd raise the money-
Right.
Deposit the money in our office.
Okay.
And then once you get all the money, in other words, it may be one fundraiser here, another fundraiser there.
Right, right, yeah.
We'll create an account for you, et cetera.
Yeah, I do with the other, right, like you do for the cross country.
And then once you hit the magic number that Suzette gave us, you're good to go because you have the money.
All right, perfect. And one thing, just so you folks get an idea, general idea with track and field, if you watch any sports, particularly football, all your defensive backs and your free safeties, they're all track guys. Those guys, probably 25 to 30% never played football in high school at all. They ran track. If you look at, they'll always say, "He runs a 4.2, he runs a 4.1, he runs a 4.3." When they go to the combine, they're looking for guys for speed, and the only way you get speed is through running. And the program is, it's a, track is a great program as well as cross-country. I have a, a, a variety of children that I, well, students from all walks of life that without cross-country, I can tell you personally, would be isolated. They would have no friends. They, these kids that I have now, they're seventeen, and I have two girls, the bond that they have is, is, I can't even tell you. So if it comes down to the dollars and cents, I won't take, I don't, I did it one year without any money, it's no big deal. But you're going to take kids that aren't great athletes that are great runners. I have kids here that we, one of the, one of my seniors did a senior project, and he, his senior project was to run a 5K. We challenge every, every team in the high school to the race so we can get kids to come and he can raise money for the Boston Children's Hospital. Well, that year we had thirteen runners and we took all thirteen spots. We ran against all the athletic kids from baseball, football, basketball, tennis, yada, yada, yada. So they might not look like athletes, but I can tell you, they are. And I'm passionate and I, I, we're just like on the outside. These kids, if they had the, the second season, they would go even further. I have a girl that ran for me, Bethany Alvarez, she's running at Castle Gate, in Castleton and, and Penn, Vermont, cross-country. I have a kid that's in the Marine Corps right now, Eric Suza, he graduated last year. I've got a letter from him just stating, you know, what the cross-country and the team did for him going into the Marine Corps. So it builds camaraderie, and, and the kids need it. Some of these kids don't want to, you know, be in a locker room and, yeah, 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 they want to be in a small knit community, in a small knit group. I just hope if we do raise it, we're, we're good to go. And as far as the bussing issue, we need buses. You can't go, you cannot put, if you get ten kids, me as a coach, I would not allow it. I wouldn't, I would cancel the meet just because I need to be there, I need to see these kids, I need to make sure they're controlled. I can't have kids run amok in, in a car with a kid that's driving like a Yahoo or whatever and crashes. I'm not, can't have it. So buses are a priority and, and it's imperative that we do it. If you want to get vans for small units, that's good too. But I don't foresee us getting that. But the bussing is, you have to put them on a bus. You got to isolate them and have control of the kids at all times because if not, forget it. And, and we got a petition of almost ninety kids. They're not all cross-country kids. I only had seventeen, so, and I haven't seen who, we'll probably get football kids, basketball kids, baseball kids, girls. So it's advantageous. I think that, you know, it's a great program, and I commend her for coming up here, Suzette, and all the parents. These are all, most of them cross-country parents, so they're here in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Hi, Justin Sherman, a cross-country mom. My daughter's in sixth grade, did it for the first time this year, loved it. I'd say there are about seventy kids on the team, and I know a huge majority of them couldn't participate if they didn't have that bussing. So keep that in mind, they need the bussing. But also wanted to point that track and field, don't forget the field part. Those field events are really important. There are many scholarships out there. Rhode Island is one of the few states that has certain field events that other states in the country do not have. And I can tell you this because two of my nieces threw the hammer at Point Smith High School and had full scholarships to college. I am a URI grad, four years on the track team, I threw the javelin. So there are skill events. Track and field offers so much opportunity for so many different events. So it's not like softball where you're on a team and it's a complete team sport. There's opportunity whether you have skill in the throwing events or you're a great runner. So strongly encourage everyone to consider this. I think it'd be great for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, I just want to say too, we hear this all the time, "I'd offer everything if we could." We have passionate hockey families, we have passionate gymnastics families. We hear this all the time. I mean, I wish we could offer everything, I do. But like I said, I, I want our A.D.s, I'm going to support this tonight because I do think it's needed. I think it's a great transition from the middle school to the high school. But we do need to look at this as a whole to kind of look at what we can and can't support because, you know, we are only a school of 516, we are a small town, there's only so many, you know, fundraising opportunities out there. But like I said, I am going to support it. I think you've all made the terrific case for it, and it's, it's going to be exciting.
Okay, so we're going to vote on approval of the THS spring track and field team and permission to fundraise and apply for grants for program startup costs and approval contingent on fundraising being successful. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Suzette. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
We are up to item eight C, request to seek bids for a vendor to provide substitute nurses.
Yes, I'm seeking school committee approval to go out to bid for outside agencies or an outside agency to provide nursing, substitute nurses for us. In addition, what we have right now is we have situations when our nurses go out on field trips where they go with the students because students have medical issues, or if they're out sick or they want to go to a professional development conference, we have to use other, if we don't have one of our substitute nurses, which we only have one or two, and they're not always available because they're happily retired, our remaining nurses have to cover the schools. And the nurses have submitted, I know they've talked to, gone to wellness and talked to the wellness subcommittee. I've talked, I've received communication from them as well. I certainly understand the need, and I'm asking permission because that's the only way we'd really be able to cover it, is to have an agency provide people for us when we need them. And I would like to go out to bid to see if it's cost-effective for us to do so.
I'll make a motion for discussion.
Second?
Yes. And Doc Black?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
When we had our health and wellness meeting, the nurses did come to speak to us about these situations, and so I asked them to please come to you and come before the whole school committee.
Yes, they did. They sent us, they sent me their request.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Item HD, acceptance of theater memorabilia donation.
Yes, I'm just asking, excuse me, the school committee to approve a donation from Anthony Ritchie to the, our theater arts program. And you can see the items that have been donated.
Okay. Do you have a motion to-
I make a motion to accept.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
I, I just want to, this total donation, just for people that don't, you know, don't have the backup, this is quite generous. This memorabilia totals over $7,000 to the high school. Very appreciative.
Lot of stuff.
Now, some of it's nice.
Yeah, it is.
You get all that stuff.
Very nice.
Where is it all being kept?
It's all nice. I don't, I don't know where it is yet.
Okay.
Okay.
And I, we shouldn't-
I'm sorry?
Maybe not if, we shouldn't know where it is right now.
Well, yeah, I guess-
It could generate some sales.
Is it being displayed, is it?
It's not being displayed yet. I'm not even sure where it is right now.
All right.
Okay.
Somewhere. Somewhere.
Somewhere.
All right, with the, all right, all those in favor? Okay, any announcements?
Yes, I would just like to thank Mr. Anderson and the Public Works Department, as the committee's well aware and the, our folks in the audience and who are at home watching may not be aware, one of our two trucks broke down and it's an issue that we need to address sooner rather than later as far as the truck goes. But thanks to Mr. Anderson and the folks at DPW, they came and, on Saturday and plowed out the high school and the middle school so the rec department would be able to function. And we also have, as Mrs. Levesque mentioned, Project Purple Week Activity scheduled for this in two weeks.
Dr. Black?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
Yes, today's National Law Enforcement Day, so I'd like to thank them for keeping us safe and hope that they stay safe themselves. Thank you very much to all our police officers.
And also Thursday night is our joint meeting here at 7:00 with the Budget Committee and Town Council, our annual get-together.
I can't wait.
And also the, and the eighth grades coming up, right, to the high school?
Yes.
For their-
6:30.
6:30.
6:30 what day?
This Thursday.
Thursday. I don't think any of the parents will be coming to our joint meeting.
All right, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Kelly, did you?
Second.
Oh, sorry, Mrs. Levesque.
I'm sorry, I just saw you standing there, I didn't-
Kelly Levesque, 217 Crandall Road, I'm having trouble finding the backup for the meetings. I was on the Secretary of State website today and I was on our website, I couldn't find the budget. Where is the backup?
We haven't put the budget up because it's in flux.
Okay.
The other backups, I'll talk to my secretary, those should be, backup documents should be on our website.
On Monday.
They usually come out the Monday after the committee sees them.
Okay, I was on there this morning and I didn't see them. And where am I looking?
If anyone's having problems, send an email to the superintendent and we'll make sure you get this.
I'll take, I'll look into it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn-